Just starting the Gurnee Village Board, meeting Committee of the Whole for August 28th, 2023. And roll call, please.
Woodside.
Present.
Garner. O'Brien.
Present.
Ballmas.
Rosa.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Present.
Stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. So tonight, we have the Strategic Plan, item number one, and number two is the Blue Ribbon Commission for Pedestrian Mobility. So Pat, I'll start with you.
Yeah, so I'll just give a quick intro, excuse me, and then we'll turn it over to staff. So as you know, we got the 2023-2026 Strategic Plan was adopted by the Board in November. Similar to the last Strategic Plan, we'll do updates twice a year. We'll do an update in the fall, summer in this case, for our first one. And then the second one will be in conjunction with the budget process. So when we walk through the budget development process at the Budget Workshop, I will run through some of the initiatives as far as what's included in the budget, and then the update will be included in the budget document. So tonight's our first update. Again, we're pretty early on in the Strategic Plan. It's a three-year, three-to-four-year plan, so some of the action steps we haven't even gotten to yet, they may be in 2024, 2025. But we'll walk through kind of where we're at right now. We're going to walk through each of the initiatives. Staff member is going to give just a brief overview again of what the initiative is, and then give an update on progress to date. So what that said.
Sounds good.
So, and I guess I'll just say, so it's hard to see up on the screen, the document in front of you is laid out to be viewed, open like this, so you're kind of looking back and forth between the pages. That's the same thing that we're looking at up here on the screen. So if you want to follow along, page by page again, if your eyesight's that good, then it's better than mine.
All right, so the first strategic priority was fiscal sustainability. We took kind of a different approach to this one. We didn't do the traditional kind of fund pensions, make sure reserves meet the policy. We really tried to integrate it with what Ellen does and from a finance standpoint, getting her data to be able to make decisions about tax base mix and how to really direct incentives, retention, attraction kind of efforts and things like that. So most of them, other than one of the, one of the five or one of the four initiatives revolve around that. So the first one is developing fiscal growth and redevelopment strategy. Again, this really is in conjunction with Ellen and David. From the finance standpoint, there's a few different action steps that are included in there, and it really centers around, like I said, data collection and reporting. The first one is developing a report on greatest risks to the village revenue base and kind of what the current mix and the ideal mix is. Got a little bit of a start on that. I have an outline. Really, it's doing a lot of research with like IML and the GFOWA and ICMA and things like that to kind of come up with that. It's also looking at other communities' success stories, or maybe not so successful stories, and finding out what they did well and didn't do well, or where they stumbled. So that one's in progress. The second one, again, is a report on the big three, just what the mix is of each tax type. We know that's one of the biggest risks we face from a financial standpoint, is our reliance on those. And a lot of discussion in the Strategic Plan is how to reduce that or, I guess, work around it. Again, here I have a draft almost ready to go. This one's almost complete. Just going to share an internal, an internal one amongst staff, and then we'll be able to report on that on a regular basis. So we know exactly how reliant we are on those big three for our major tax types going forward, and we can track that over time, too. So we can see if some of the things we're doing is working to make us less reliant. So. Third action step relates to maintaining a portfolio of taxes or revenue generating items. This is more in the big scheme of revenue options. What's our portfolio? What's our book that we can, that we can look at? Now, whether we employ those or not is, you know, obviously totally up to the Board, but at least we know what those are and how it would affect any development coming in. So that's, that's that action step. A little bit of progress. Again, I got an outline. There's just a ton of research that goes into that through the IML again. It will be a big one there. Fourth step, fourth action step, is understanding what taxes are currently generated. This one was more on a per-square-foot basis, so we know, so we can know, we can anticipate from a tax generation standpoint, based on what's, what's coming in. We do this now, but it's more Ellen asking me for information and then kind of reactively getting it for her. This would make it a little more proactive, so we have that stuff up front. And again, all for the purpose of getting information to be able to drive those retention, attraction efforts. Fifth one really kind of joins all that information together, takes all the tax generation ideas, and puts it with available properties to see what's out there. Again, that one, not, not a ton of progress. I've worked a little bit with Eric Vennan and GIS to put together some maps. And in the end, we'll have a map of business types, tax types, and potential tax types and generations. So it's just getting through those steps. But, and then with that, I'll let Ellen take the last two, last two initiatives there, the last two action items for that initiative.
Thank you. Some of the sources that Brian referenced are, you know, like GFOWA and other ones. There are also some really good sources that we're starting to dig in and explore through ICSC, which is the Retail Trade Federation. They give us national benchmarking, not only by retail category, like, you know, all apparel, soft goods, home improvement, you know, sort of what the national averages are per square foot, but also even by branding. Since we have so many national brands, I think it's kind of fun and helpful to be able to compare our, you know, Menards to the national average for Menards. So we're, we're starting to dig into that, and I think we're going to probably have some fun with that and have some interesting takeaways. Just an anecdote on the tax heat map, the importance of knowing the geography of your, we know it. We have a sophisticated staff. We have a mature community. You know, we know it. I don't think this is ever, ever was us or going to be us, but there was a small suburban community that I used to be aware of, didn't work for, but used to be aware of, that really wasn't familiar with their tax base. They had pretty limited retail thought. They knew who everybody was. One quarter, their sales tax dropped precipitously, and they didn't know why, because no one had closed. Turned out to be industrial. Hidden away in the industrial park was a company pumping out sales tax. So just the importance of knowing who you have and where they're at and knowing and having that heat map. So I want to talk a little bit about the Triangle. So we've made some interesting progress. I think this is probably one of those goals upon which it would be hard to find somebody who disagreed in terms of the desire for a downtown-like gathering place. So because we're a mature community, and there aren't very many parcels of sufficient size to achieve that, we as staff have honed in on the piece that we call the Triangle, south of Six Flags, bounded by Washington Route 21 and the tollway. It's 44.1 acres by now, having been amassed under single ownership over many, many years. And frankly, there's just not really other good spots besides that sort of area for this, for this sort of endeavor. So just wanted to kind of fill you in on what we've done. We have developed some concept plans that show the development community what we'd like to see there. And this kind of parlay's into some other things we'll talk about for other sites in town. What do we want to see? How can the site be divided? We've had some really good engineers' estimates of infrastructure costs to make it happen. So we've been able to go out to the development community, market this all summer long, tour some developers around the site, and begin to really think about what might happen if we could create a, we don't, downtown is the wrong word, but it is a central gathering place, right? It's retail, entertainment, hospitality, with some multifamily, because you need, you need 24/7 consumers, and that's, there's demand for that product type. So that's exciting. I hope these, these conversations move forward this fall so that we have more to share with you. That's about where we're at right now. We do continue to receive a fairly consistent flow of requests for multifamily. So this particular action step speaks to finding infill sites that are appropriate. So where the future land use plan has called for higher density multifamily, we are starting to create one-pagers that kind of show that and make that available. You know, the housing inventory is limited, mortgage rates are high, so we still have renters, and there's still demand for that product type. Okay. So I guess, I guess there is one last step on this one. Step seven really articulates this shared vision. So with, with, with the downtown, the Triangle site, frankly, it's pretty easy, because we really, I think, as a community, have a shared vision of what we want to see there, entertainment, retail, those types of uses. It's not as easy on other properties. So this, this step speaks to the fact that we may want to be more proactive. We typically react to development proposals. Rather than doing that on certain, not every parcel, but on certain key parcels, identify where those are, be proactive using the future land use plan as our starting point, engaging in conversations with property owners to find out what their timelines are, where they see, how long they want to own the property and what they see it being, and then all of our stakeholders, and maybe start to develop some guidance, which then shaves time off the development process and provides certainty to developers in terms of what the community, because a good developer will ask that question, right? They will start their, their process by, what does the community want to see? What does the community not want to see? So we, this would help us answer that question. Leading on to the next initiative, 1.2, develop and implement a new business attraction plan. I think it's easy to see the through line between the things that Brian was talking about and how we get to this. So I'm going to turn this over to David to talk a little bit about how regulatory can be an incentive as well as financial.
Good evening. So the first two items, first two action items under this initiative are basically internal assessments, internal improvements for efficiency sakes going through the development process. The first one is our permitting process. About 10 years ago, we took a big step, implemented a, a new permitting system that encompassed projects, zoning projects, building permits, code enforcement, all in one hat. Now, that's got 10 years of good data in it, 10 years of utilization. We're going to be taking a look at that process once again. We fortunately hired a new planner in the last month or so. So having her on board as well, she's worked in several different communities, have an outside set of eyes, look at our process, see what we may be missing. We, we look at it every day. You know, we believe that it's a good process, that it's an efficient process. There's always going to be some, some issues, but you know, those are few and far between. But having an external set of eyes look at those will give us some good help. The second one is implementing procedural modifications, updating ordinances as needed. This is a constant progress, constant process with our zoning code. Last major update was in 2015. We've done several updates to processes and code sections since that time. We actually have four of them going through right now, four different items that were at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on the middle of the month. They'll be coming to you middle of September. So it's a constant evaluation, reassess, and implement process as we go through and, you know, have different projects come forward, things that we haven't seen before, tweaks on things we've seen before that have, and different locations.
Okay, so as we identify target properties for development, so there's really kind of a multi-layered approach to this inventorying our available properties. We already do that. We, we use, well, we use our own local market intel, but we also use a third-party source called CoStar, which is widely used by the brokerage and development communities. So as, as a staff, we've already started to go in there and make sure that those listings is what, the first thing that most of those folks will see is accurately reflective of our zoning and our future land use plan. And we have a long way to go, because there are a lot of properties, but we, that's, that's our first level, so that what they see is as accurate. But then as we identify those key opportunity sites, and we'll have to come up with some catchy name as to what we call those, one community calls them spark sites, or, you know, I like, I like opportunity sites because it fits with our tagline, but we'll begin to determine, you know, the uses that the future land use plan calls for, rank them, and understand in this process that if what we want is here and the market is building here, you know, how you bridge that gap can happen a lot of ways, right? It can happen with regulatory relief that we can consider, or it can happen with incentives. And so just really consciously thinking through that process. And I think, I think we're actually all really going to enjoy that. I know we've enjoyed it on the, on the Triangle piece. And then I guess, Brian, you have a little bit of four and five?
Yeah, really just continuation. There's, there's some overlap between a few of these initiatives here. But adding to kind of our, the map portfolio that we have, doing a business category heat map, so what, what's going where, so that we can tell if there's any synergies when, when folks come in. And then also tax type. So if it's amusement tax, food and beverage, kind of where those circles are, big circles are in concentrics. So see, see how they interact with each other and where they're, where they're concentrated within different business parks and things like that, so.
And then for step number six, we know we've, I think we've talked about the visioning process enough, so I won't belabor that point, but I do think it's interesting, that's, you know, that's the process where we talk about what we want, what the property owners want, what the stakeholders and citizens want. But, you know, informing that discussion obviously always has to be not only what the market is today, but what the market, what we think it might be 20 years from now. I mean, that's future land use planning. Development is a long game. So starting to just try to understand, you know, what this up-and-coming generation of consumers is, I think it's, so the Gen Z's are the, are the folks, the kids that are in their mid-20, the oldest of whom are in their mid-20s, right? So 20 years from now, they're going to be in their peak earning years, and they're going to be our consumers and our, and our families that are raising kids through our schools. So understanding what they like and don't like is kind of interesting. And as, you know, obviously it's early, but the data that's starting to come out on that generation, they're the first generation in history that's grown up entirely with digital technology at their fingertips, and yet they still value shopping in physical stores. So the data really suggests that we, with our built environment, you know, that, that physical bricks and mortars plays a role in omnichannel. And so when those Gen Z's get surveyed, they report shopping online and in stores about equally. It's really interesting. I would have never foreseen that. I'm sure a lot of other people wouldn't have either.
No rebuttal, Nick. I see the look on your face.
Not buying it. Okay, 1.3.
So the first action step in 1.3, which is formalize a business retention program, the first action step there is in our big tax categories, what we call the big four. So that's sales tax, food and beverage, hotel and amusement. Who's our, who's our top taxpayers, right? So just identifying those as, you know, where we want to start when it comes to business retention and, and having a regular communication report that goes to, goes to Ellen and Jody and the efforts they do with business retention and focusing some of those grant and incentive dollars and things like that. So having that, we do it now, but it's more of an ask, you know, Ellen's almost got to pull it, and then I'll get it for her. But just getting that routine. So that's, that's really what that one is. And that'll lead into more elements of the retention program that Ellen will talk about.
So the second step here is to enhance and fund the small, small business capital grant program, which you have done, and we very much appreciate that. The businesses do. You heard a full report on this from management analyst Jody Luca last meeting, so I won't redo all that, other than to say, you know, suffice to say, it's been a tremendous success. We appreciate the support. You know, it's been a great example of good public policy and great execution by Jody in terms of her persistence and passion in getting that word out to the business community. So for the purpose of, since it is, there's, there is so much good to brag about, we will just reiterate the fact that this, this program has been expanded. This is the third year. So in the three years since its inception, we have awarded 500, more than $583,000 to nearly 50 small businesses in town, with a total project investment of $3.4 million. And the program has been enhanced so that some of those early applicants can come back a second time, and they can also apply for a competitive, two a year, competitive $50,000 grants, which is enabling them to make much more significant capital investments. So thank you very much to Jody and to the Board for that great program. Couldn't be more pleased with that. The next step three is talking about business communications, engaging with our, our business partners. So out of necessity, the business partner letters were born during COVID, one or two a week transmitting, you know, the latest sources of federal aid, state aid, changing health guidance, changing operating regulations. Thankfully, we've been able to, you know, continue those with much more uplifting and forward-looking information post-COVID. Jody and I both sit on the Village's Communications Team, and we appreciate the, the structure that that provides in terms of unified messaging across all of the Village's channels. We're in regular contact with Lynn Grandstrom, who manages our Gurnee's Got It business-focused social media, and now also serves as the Executive Director of the Gurnee Chamber of Commerce, providing great continuity among our small business outreach efforts. And we collaborate on all grand openings, ribbon cuttings, Mayorhood's TOMS tours. It's really been a nice collaboration. So taking that one step further with all that cooperative effort, you know, we have a great foundation to reach out and engage with our business community. I think we are making a very big difference already, but I think this next step is to widen our circle even further. So the next step, number four, calls for developing a business group that meets regularly with the village. So this is, this is a group that I would envision maybe being a little bit different than those that we see through our small business initiatives. So maybe we're inviting our advanced manufacturers, our large national retailers that normally don't get too involved in local community events and goings-on, large offices. So really reaching out to those folks who are seeing, you know, maybe the headwinds in their own respective industries, maybe some opportunities that we wouldn't be aware of if they didn't make them aware. So really tapping into their, to their knowledge, specific to their industries. And I think that's something that, so we've, Mayorhood, through TOMS tours, we've been out to visit some of those folks, and I think it'll be really productive based upon what we've seen so far to make a more, really have a systematic effort to engage them in 2024. 1.4, that's Director Gosnell.
Yeah, so, so the first three initiatives under fiscal sustainability really revolved around tax base, expanding the tax base, the revenue side of, of the income statement. This, this is really focused on the expenditure side, making sure we're using those dollars in the most efficient manner. So 1.4 is create new strategy for operational effectiveness and efficiencies. And what this is, is really kind of a reboot of the Gurnee Process Improvement Committee, GPIC, that we, we called it a few years ago, but with more of an emphasis on the customer-focused process improvements here. So if you're familiar with like private sector lean Six Sigma, that's kind of where this has its, has its roots. So first action step is really getting together with departments. And the idea here is to do, over the Strategic Plan period, to do one process in each department. So first action step, get together with departments. We have two identified already, two processes identified, one that actually came out of the Strategic Plan, which was residential permitting. We had some feedback there, so we want to take a look at that. And then the other one is in finance, our purchasing procedures. As you know, we have a new employee in finance that has an extensive municipal background in, in municipal purchasing, so it's good to kind of use that unbiased knowledge so far, or outside view, and, and take a, take a look at that whole process again. So see if there's ways where we can, we can improve upon it. So those two are identified. I have to, still have to get with departments and identify the others. Once those are set, we'll go into establishing teams to review these. So there'll be department reps and, and finance and IT will have involvement. So those will lead into establishing those teams in each department, and that'll go into kickoff meetings, kind of where we review the purpose and the goals of what we're doing, what we're going to look at. And all that goes into really a few steps. Mapping the current, current process with, and identifying resources, whether it be personnel, time, or money, or anything that goes into, into them. Mapping that process, looking for alternatives where the resources are heavy in that process. And then coming back with what they call a future state map, which shows what the process could be if we do, you know, a few different, a few different things here, and what those savings are, whether it be, like I said, time or money. So that, those are the steps we'll ultimately get to, and then that'll lead into a, a report to go over with Pat, and then ultimately the Mayor and Village Board with whatever budget impacts there may be, you know, if it's software or anything like that, that we may have to, that we looked at in our future state map to, to get into a more efficient process. So that's ultimately where that's going to go. The next step here will probably be to get those other processes. We have budget meetings coming up where everybody will be in the room, and that's a perfect time to sit down and talk about, you know, what in your area can we look at? So that'll probably be the kickoff, and then as soon as the budget's done, then that'll take, that'll take on a life of its own, probably next spring, early next spring.
I will be speaking significantly less. I'm just going to be commenting on what has been completed so far regarding developing annual capital plan for pavement improvements. The Engineering Division has started a preliminary review of payment condition index ratings, PCI ratings, of roads within the village for selection for next fiscal year. Once the construction season ends, we'll then start to develop a more precise locations on which street will be performed. And then as years, or as the, as we get closer to the next fiscal year, these other action steps will occur.
So also under well-maintained infrastructure is initiative 2.2, which is develop a utility reliability plan. So making sure that all the utilities that we have supplied to the, to village residents for umpteen years stay in good working order. So as of right now, we've had some meetings between Public Works and Engineering. We always have meetings through the construction season every two weeks. And the last couple, we've taken advantage of to kind of brainstorm, okay, what, what utilities have we not looked at? Which ones do we need to focus on? So we've made partial list. So our next steps will be to make a more comprehensive list and then prioritize.
Continuing with well-maintained infrastructure, updating pedestrian improvement plan. The village contacted the Blue Ribbon Commission in July of '23. This past month, members stated they are satisfied with the current list. The village will, will work to continue to build paths as financial resources allow. Later, after we're all done speaking, I will be giving a brief update on upcoming improvements, what we have done, and then seek any feedback or recommendations to add to the Blue Ribbon Commission's list.
And then lastly, under well-maintained infrastructure is to perform a comprehensive standards and mandate assessment. So we found in our industry, there's certain standards to replace water main within a certain amount of time, or different mandates that have come up from IEPA or through cybersecurity. So we're trying to quantify all those, rank them, and then figure out how we need to fund them in the future.
So this is under the strategic priority of effective communication. For the first initiative, it's conducting the resident satisfaction survey. We are currently on schedule for the development of the survey. Next month, we'll begin research to look into different platforms and different methods and questions that we could ask the residents. If you see on the first sheet of the Strategic Plan, it basically underlines some benchmarks that we hope to hit, which is a percentage that says the village communicates well, the percentage that says residents trust the village. And really, this first survey will guide that baseline, and then we'll work to improve if we need to, or just basically improve as needed. For 3.2, it's the initiative of creating an interdepartment communications team structure. The majority of this has already taken place, and it continually progresses day in and day out. For the communication team members have already been identified, which is myself for administration, Sean Gayler for police, Dave Douglas for fire, and Jody Luca for community and economic development, as well as Carrie Suarez for information systems, and Ellen Dean for economic development, and Christine Poulos for Public Works. Trustee Quinn O'Brien sits on in those meetings. We discuss a lot of different things, and really, the workflow established is based on the roles that we serve in the organization. The team meetings, they serve as a valuable training opportunity for all of us involved as we share ideas on basically how to communicate different platforms, different technologies out there, and things we could share among the departments. And through that, we developed some guidelines and concepts, basically to make the village conform as a single voice and really get the message out to residents. So far, it seems like the effort has furthered our output and quality, and really the overall collaboration between all of us. One second. And then as, you know, as a result of this team environment, we're continually meeting for these meetings, and this will be a continual thing. It's to really just share information and keep the workflow going. For 3.3, under the effective communication is to develop a data-driven communications program. So, so far, the team has discussed historical practices regarding this and looked into a lot of different research. What we found at this point is that a lot of the communications data is stored in different platforms for social media. It's mostly in Agora Pulse, which is our management software. And then through the website data is Google Analytics, which holds that. And then we got a lot of the request data in the GovQA platform. So it's really looking at a lot of these different places and kind of getting more familiar with the data than technically analyzing it at this point. Through that, we've developed some strategies to really help the communications, which is the redesigning of certain publications, things that residents may need help understanding better, or just things that a lot of questions have come up on. Through that, we expanded content and keep to expand our points of contact, because we always want to reach a larger audience and make sure our voice is heard. Also, by looking at this data, it's kind of how we, as a team, basically put together our communication plans, figure out, you know, what are some things that keep getting questions on, or something that we didn't emphasize in the past that we need to emphasize now. So by doing this, it's leveraging, it's leveraging our ability to basically connect and communicate with the residents. And we're also using these platforms to figure out optimal send times, because there's a lot of algorithms out there that basically tell us when the website or social lot of algorithms out there that basically tell us when the website or social media page is a specific time of day, or if we send this email through our MailChimp software at this time, most people are likely to use it. So just, you know, in the past year, the technology has improved, and we're continually using that. So. And to wrap this up for the effective communication section, it's the development of this constituent service program. So basically, we looked at, what we're trying to do is categorize all the non-emergency contacts that the village gets, and then eliminate those one by one, if we can, either through process improvement, as Brian spoke earlier, or effectively communicating a little bit better. So far, we've learned that the system that we currently got is GovQA. It's our request system, is that, you know, not all things are put in there, and it's kind of a clunky system to be used as like a 3-1-1, kind of like data mining software for what we're trying to do. So there were some limitations with it, and I discussed it with IT, and I've been looking at different alternatives out there, and we'll continue to do that. So that's really it for effective communication.
All right, thank you. Moving on to strategic priority number four, a stable and well-trained workforce. The first initiative was to update and implement a compensation and non-compensation plan. Right now, the labor market is incredibly competitive. Drivers are wages and just having limited staffing, ability to staff our positions in terms of available workforce. So that was one of the things that came out of our budget process to prepare for this budget year. So we did include funding to go through a compensation review. And although that was intended to start this summer, a couple other competing priorities have kept that a little bit, pushed that a little bit further into the fall. I've probably got the RFP about 85% done, just doing some fine tuning, want to kind of touch base with some colleagues and just see if we can get the right focus of really what we want to do to accomplish that and keep it within the timelines and the budget process and have something that will work for our needs. So continuing to work forward on that. So I do anticipate in the next couple of months that will be kicking off. All right. So strategic initiative 4.2, increasing training opportunities for operational effectiveness. One of the targets was to inventory and document all of our current training programs across all village departments. That is being done on a department-by-department basis. One of the challenges that came out of this goal was to kind of bring everything together, being that certain departments use different operating and tracking systems. So kind of trying to compile all of that may take some additional resources in terms of either new software, or somehow some new tracking, and maybe some staffing time to do that. So we may not get as fully into that goal as what we initially intended, but the departments are keeping track, they are inventorying. We're in a very highly regulated industry across the board. So whether it's professional training, it's skills training, we have compliance training mandates, every day there's a new compliance mandate that comes down. So, you know, we are very much aware of those and keeping track of those things. From an HR side of things, have increased the compliance side, the soft skills trainings that aren't always the first thing that you think of. So along with the annual sexual harassment training that's required by the state of Illinois, we have cybersecurity training, we have the whistleblower training. So all of those are things that are going through on an annual basis. We use a platform called Know Before, which is a product that came out of the IS department for security training and cybersecurity training. They do offer compliance training module as well. So I've used that. We've done some microaggression training, some bias training. So we'll continue to expand on those things. I know Austin was able to use it for fire extinguisher training. So it does go beyond just the cybersecurity. So we're trying to kind of really utilize those resources that we already have and take advantage of those. So that will continue.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Those are the things that we all had to take. I mean, do you do that mostly online and then document who has taken it? I mean, those are all the state mandated ones?
Yes, so we use a lot through the Know Before, and that does track it. And then we can key track and send out automated reminders if employees are behind on completing their training. We can keep up to date on that. We can update it if somebody leaves employment, or if they're out and not able to take the training, if they're on extended absence, we can hold that and set it up for later. Through our MUNIS system, we also do acknowledgements, and we have new personal policy manuals, so we are able to track all of that electronically. And a lot of it is on webinar-based. So that's increased compliance significantly by having it through the webinars. So but through the, you know, through the intervening years, I mean, this is something that is continuing on an ongoing basis, so we do, you know, keep up on that from that respect. All right. Number 4.3, professional development pathways. Again, this is something that we do work on throughout the year with our various departments, and it is an ongoing process, and we review it not only when somebody leaves or plans on retiring, but well in advance during our staffing review through our budget process. So a little bit of this goal is tied to our compensation survey, so once we get that kicked off, we'll be able to complete a few other things and fill in some of those key areas, knowledge and skills. Our new recruitments, we do continue to focus on succession planning as part of this goal. We are recently doing that with the senior planner position and the eventual network administrator. So we're hoping to get those in place to kind of build that, those steps towards that succession planning. All right, so just, again, so we also do a lot of professional development internally and have been doing that for quite a long time. Our departments do take advantage of various training programs that are out there for police and fire. So when new employees are promoted, they do get the opportunity to go and get that professional supervisory side of training and that elevated level of training that would be needed for those upper-level positions. So we continue with that, and then taking advantage of conferences and, you know, training that's offered by professional groups. We do that on a regular basis, and we'll continue to do so.
Is that, again, does that also apply to, I mean, I realize police and fire have it, does public works have that same kind of thing going on over there, too?
And then there's also through the state of Illinois, the IPSI. It's a professional training for supervisors in the public works field. So we've had all of our, or two of our supervisors and a couple of lead maintenance workers have started the program. It's a three-year cycle that they go down for three years for a certain period of time every three years, or once a year every year for three years. There, you got it right. For what, two weeks, three weeks, one week? So it's very intensive training, and so each year builds on the prior, so they do go through that. So we've had several, and I believe even in engineering, you've gone, right, Nick? So, yeah, so we kind of cross all those gamuts and make sure that we keep our staff trained.
Thank you.
All right. Before I move, any other questions before I move on? Okay. And finally, initiative 4.4, recruiting and retention efforts with a focus on diversity. Again, as Ellen mentioned, you know, the next generation has a different approach to things, so we are constantly trying to stay updated with best practices, identifying how to reach those generations, the next workforce that we need to have. So working, again, in conjunction with Austin and his group, you know, understanding what the new communication methods are, what the new social platforms are to reach that audience, expanding our LinkedIn presence, using things like Indeed, and, you know, considering other avenues for conducting interviews, so that candidates aren't always coming in here. It's kind of, it's more or less on the candidate's time and not so much on our time. So we are trying to adapt our processes to make it a broader reach, make it easier for candidates to, and to get engaged with us as an employer. So we do a lot within the departments to really reach out and begin that engagement process very early on, before they've even put an application on file. So I know our police, fire, public works departments, we, you know, staff members attend job fairs, career fairs. They set up a booth at Gurnee Mills Mall and recruit and just talk to people. And so we've had a couple candidates that, when we opened up a recruitment process, because they had met with Commander Kalanowski and Detective Gaylor out at the mall, just on a random booth, you know, they were engaged enough and interested and wanted to kind of complete that process with the Gurnee Police Department. And, you know, and the Fire Department does the same thing. So we've had success that way, and it's just, you really have to get that grassroots, ground level discussion going with candidates. Just putting it out on Indeed is not enough, you have to make that engagement. So our departments work very hard in promoting that and following through on those things. So it is, it's not just my effort, it is mostly their efforts. I just get to report on it. So I do appreciate all the effort that the departments put into that. But we do continue to, again, you know, fill our positions with an eye to diversity. Just a couple of quick stats, and I'll wrap up. From January till current, so till August of this year, of our new full-time hires, 22% have been ethnically or racially diverse. We have had a couple of part-time hires that those candidates have been falling into 100% of racially or ethnically diverse candidates. And then over our summer program, we probably had the most diverse group of students and summer workers that we have ever had. Almost 50% of our hires were diverse for over the summer months. So again, connecting with those younger, the generation, the interns, the summer workers, you know, giving them that preview at that level to municipal work and having such a diverse group is only going to benefit us down the road. So those were some of our accomplishments to date.
All right, thank you. Strategic priority number five is a safe community. Kind of tag teamed here by, for public safety and the Police Department and the Fire Department. So as I go through these, myself and Deputy Chief Douglas will tackle some of these together. As you've heard on multiple levels to this point, recruitment, retention, and developing a plan related to that with impeccable timing. The Police Department is sending Commander Kalanowski to Northwestern's Police Staff and Command, which is a high-level 12-week administrative training program. One of the requirements that comes out of that training program is a management study, or what we call a staff study. And so he's been tasked with developing a formal recruitment and retention plan that will be presented at a future date as part of the strategic plan. But I just want to mention a couple of things related to where we are today. As you all know, the Police Department has hired more than 50% of its current workforce in the last two years. And with that comes an immense amount of energy and training and resources that go into the, not just the hiring, but the training and the preparing those officers to work in the community of Gurnee. And so retention is a huge priority for us because of all the efforts that have gone into replacing the police officers that we've had to replace. We need to retain them. And so we need to ensure that they feel as though they're part of the Village of Gurnee family and the Gurnee Police Department, and that we keep that fire lit for that servant's heart, for them to go out and give back to the community and really put the community's needs above their own. And so I see a tie-in with recruitment, retention, and wellness. And I don't want to speak for the Fire Department, but we're going to take a joint approach to this with our recruitment teams working together and developing strategies centered around wellness that will hopefully put us in a strong position to retain those employees. We will be swearing in four more police officers Wednesday here in the chambers, and so that will put our percentage of new hires a little bit higher. We're getting close to where we need to be, but we still have, you know, call it 12 officers in training who have yet to impact the schedule. And so while our staffing is where it needs to be, we still have, you know, six months or so, and that six months keeps moving down the road. So with that, I'm going to turn the initiative 5.1, which was create a public safety recruitment retention plan, over to Deputy Chief Douglas.
So, yeah, as the team starts to work together and do the research on best practices for recruitment and retention, we'll be able to develop a budget that we'll bring to bear here in the fiscal '24-'25, and we'll be able to go ahead and implement those practices. So we're excited about that, and we're, right now, just in the early stages of that development. We just created our recruitment teams, or excuse me, our, yeah, our recruitment and retention teams. So we want to get another level and get to that firefighter level, because that's the group that we need to hire first to get onto our department. We need to build and develop that excitement, and as Christina said multiple times, get these young people to engage in the fire service. It's really fizzled out over the years as far as people wanting to be excited about the fire and police service, and it's still a very, it's a wonderful job, and it's a place where we can make the most impact in our own communities if we choose to do so. So one of the things that, again, we've been doing is just attending the recruitment job fairs, going to the colleges, going to the high school. Fire has been getting involved. A few of our members are a part of the CLC Fire Basic Operations Program. So we're able to interact with these students who are just becoming, they're in very early stages of becoming firefighters. So we're getting into their ear, and we're talking to them also about becoming great firefighters, but also becoming Gurnee firefighters. So we've been lucky with that, where we will, we just actually offered a job to one of those students who went through the program, became a state-certified firefighter. So they're accepting a position with Gurnee, and we will be getting a second one here shortly from that same program. So that's what we're trying to do, is just reach out to these young people and get them to get engaged into the fire and police service. And that is all I have for 5.1.
All right. 5.2 is develop a public safety community engagement program. Again, always been one of the priorities from the Police Department's perspective is having a strong relationship with the community, developing the bonds that we need to gain the trust and maintain that trust so that we have a solid working relationship. We have already begun implementing the programs that were kind of sidelined post-COVID or because of COVID. We continue to explore new ways to outreach the youth of our community and the different community groups that are contained within the Village of Gurnee. And so we have a number of programs that were previously in place that have been re-implemented. We also have new programs that we're exploring and looking at. We recently hosted a cops and bobbers event with, in conjunction with the Gurnee Park District, extremely successful, putting our police officers out with 75 kids throughout the community to work and teach on fishing. And so something that was, we received a lot of positive feedback from, both the community and the Park District, and I know something that we wish to continue to grow forward, grow and move forward with. We also have a number of training events that we will be hosting within the community in conjunction with the Fire Department and Public Works, training in the park. Those will begin rolling out here shortly, and so we're excited to be part of that again, and we appreciate the opportunity to do so. Community engagement is a pillar of, part of our service. And so community involvement within the Police Department is one of our four pillars of policing. And so we'll continue to make that a priority and continue to budget appropriately as we move forward, and then implement new programs as we can. Part of the challenges has been staffing and all of the training that has been going on. It has somewhat limited the ability to do as much as we would like, but as we get closer to those trained officer numbers, sky's the limit, really, for what we can do in the community. And we have a welcoming community that is always looking for more involvement, and so we're very blessed to be able to have that relationship. So that's 5.2, developing a public safety community engagement program.
Excuse me, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Is one of the programs, I don't think you have the Explorer's program anymore?
So we did have to shut down the Explorer program during COVID, and then, and that was really shut down for about a year and a half. The challenge is trying to get that program back up and running. program back up and running has, one, been staff, having staff in place to be able to commit to the amount of hours that's necessary to run a successful program, but also recognizing the, the generational changes that have taken place that everybody else has talked about and, and the challenges to the youth in the community from their peers about being involved with a Explorer-type policing program. And so we haven't written that off. We do have a number of new officers that we have hired in the last two years that are products of Explorer programs, not only here in Gurnee, but also in other communities. And so the, the heart is still there. It's just a matter of being able to, to implement it and, and get it started again.
Are there still, still state competitions going on with the Explorers?
Yes, there are still state and national competitions that are ongoing. There are still a few Explorer programs left in Lake County, but honestly, they're much, much smaller than they were in, say, 2019.
Just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome. Initiative 5.3 is create a stakeholder relationship strategy tied in a little bit to what Austin talked about in the survey. We'll also be pushing out a, a survey related to public safety at the same time, which will help us gain the, the information and the data that we need to better address this. But not unlike the community programs, the Police Department has always taken a very proactive approach to building and maintaining relationships with our professional partners in the community, both taxing bodies and, and other businesses. And so we do quarterly, twice a year, once a year meetings with a number of different businesses in town, really more on an informal process. And so one of the things we're looking to do here is kind of formalize that a little bit, a little bit more formal so that, so that we can do a better job of tracking that and how those meetings go. And so again, we got to get, we need the data from the, the surveys in order to really move this forward. But we continue to strengthen those existing relationships that we have. And we're looking forward to growing those and adding some new ones. And so Initiative 5.3, before I turn it over to, to Deputy Chief Douglas, who will tackle 5.4, is there, can I answer any questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Initiative 5.4 for a safe community is to update comprehensive major incident training plans. Of recent Battalion Chief Stephens has reached out to the department representatives to focus on updating the NIMS training spreadsheets and just basically getting a, an idea of personnel that are in need of that training and supervisors that are in need of that training. We're not currently at 100% like we used to be, and that's mainly just because Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, we're looking at new people. We've had promotions. So initial people coming into our departments are getting some, you know, one type of training which can be assigned online mostly. And a lot of our supervisors that have just been recently promoted, they're going to get a seated class, a higher level NIMS class, which will be seated class to take a, a place in the spring through the Illinois Fire Service Institute. So we're looking at deploying that training in the spring. And again, it's just really to be able to onboard and give our, our people time to get onboarded as new employees with the city. So we'll get them trained up and, and build that incident management system framework once we get them onboarded. Just to share a couple of trainings that the Police and Fire have attended for multi-agency training and also interdepartmental training. Police and Fire attended a 16-hour joining, joint agency training at the Waukegan Police Department for Active Shooter. It was a great training in a sense of our Gurnee Police and our Gurnee Fire Department working together in that specific incident management structure so that we could work together effectively and, and do the best for the people that were there, that were there to save and help. The other training that we recently went to was a Lake County-wide, state and local training along with Wisconsin State and local agencies and wheeling at MABUS headquarters. That is basically was a training to identify the strengths and weaknesses of communications interoperability between the two states and all the different agencies. In 2024, the RNC is going to take place up in Milwaukee. So a lot of what we're hearing is that a lot of the dignitaries will be in Chicago just due to the lack of lodging that Milwaukee's going to be able to provide. So a lot of them will be in Chicago. So the idea is that we want to plan and be prepared for any type of threat that could happen on the interstate between the, between the state lines, which would then include potentially military and a lot of different agencies. So we were doing that as a tabletop exercise. In the future, there'll be a actual field exercise at the Illinois Beach State Park. And we'll be able to determine additional strengths and weaknesses of communication there. Is there any questions for updating our comprehensive major incident training plan?
The next area of priority is lifestyle vitality. That's a pretty big, a pretty big topic. But as you might imagine, this first initiative has to do with businesses. So you'll hear a common thread over the next few initiatives. They're about creating ways that we can connect with each other, connect with our business community, connect between our neighbors and our neighborhood associations, give them more ways to get to you and talk with you and provide input. But this one is really business focused. So since we're at the tail end of the summer season, outdoor dining is still on our minds. So since COVID, that became very imperative that we pivot and figure out a way to help our restaurants survive COVID. And one of that, one of those ways was outdoor dining. So at the time, we streamlined approvals. We basically removed the need for a permit for most types of outdoor dining. And even those where we did have to insist on one, there was no fee. And we've been continuing to use those temporary guidelines. They've been working very well. We haven't had any difficulties. The residents love the preponderance of outdoor dining. We've started featuring our independent restaurants on Fridays in the weekly announcements and through a feature that Jody created called Alfresco Fridays. And we've really had fun with it. But alas, it's time to move to a more permanent, you know, approach to this. So over the winter, staff will be reviewing those temporary outdoor dining guidelines, tweaking them as we need to for, for them to be appropriately permanent. And we'll be back to you over the winter with a recommendation for a text amendment so that that becomes codified and goes into effect for 2024. The initiative number two has to do with special event guidelines. I'm going to kind of combine two and three because both of these really relate to encouraging and supporting special events that bring visibility to our retail centers. We have, we have a firm belief that, that those small retailers that are sprinkled around centers don't necessarily benefit from the same coordinated marketing approach that, for instance, Gurnee Mills does so well. You know, events and promotions and shared marketing and so forth. So part of our philosophy is that if we can help support them in doing things like car shows or family festivals or girls' night out or, you know, concerts spread throughout the community, that that brings, it brings visibility to the businesses. It gives the residents a reason to come together. So through the, through the outreach that Jody's been doing on Small Business Capital Grant, that's provided a nice entree to talk about that. And you might not know it, but you have provided a little bit of budgetary support for those things to happen. A good example this year, of course, the Gurnee Farmers Market is in its third retail location. So the landlords in, on East Grand, last year Riverside, now at Saratoga Square. You know, we appreciate them hosting the event. It has brought some visibility to the businesses. Some of the businesses in those centers have turned out to be sponsors of that event. We are a, you know, modest sponsor of the event at $3,000 in, from our budget. And I really have to give a big thank you to Public Works because the operational support of lending a generator and making sure that everything goes, goes smoothly. The Police Department, it's been really a nice event. So that's one example. There are smaller examples. There are businesses, when they have an anniversary, we might participate at a very small level. Repeat Street celebrated its 20th year this year and we bought $20 gift cards to hand out for other Gurnee businesses to kind of pay it forward. So just trying to be creative and think about ways that help the businesses celebrate what they want to celebrate and attract customers. So the next step number four talks about engaging the Chamber of Commerce in promotion and events. And there's a lot to talk about here. So I'll, I'll try to keep fairly high level because I know you're familiar with these activities. But this year's Gurnee Days Parade was really exciting for us, not only because it was the 50th year and that was a huge milestone that everyone celebrated, but thanks to Jody's efforts and Lynn Granstrom's from the Chambers efforts, we had the biggest group of small business representatives walking with us as a group, shared message, village and chamber, you know, linked arm in arm. We worked together to support Gurnee business, shop local, dine local, spend local. It was a fabulous day. It was a fabulous turnout and that was really special, the week, the week we worked together that way. Over the next few months, expect to see several more events coming out that involve partnership between the village, the Park District, the Chamber, the library. The first one coming up is Bonfires and Brews, A Taste of Gurnee. That sprung out of what we know the Chamber's been wanting to do, you know, A Taste of Gurnee for a long time. We knew that we wanted an event in the fall. Mayorhood's leadership helped to make that happen. And of course, the Park District is, you know, the best at, at executing on these sorts of things. So this event will be an adult-only event. It's September 30th. It's, it's in the evening following the Chili Open. Outdoor, Outdoor on the Lawn, featuring Gurnee restaurants, bringing some of their signature dishes and, and their signature drinks. Our new Pips Meterie will be there. We'll have live music by Matt Meyer. There's going to be axe throwing and because it's adults only, they could be real axes and lots of fun events and just camaraderie with, with your neighbors and friends. So that's been a tremendous new, a brand new addition, thanks to the village's participation and, and the Park District being willing to, to coordinate it. And the Chamber being willing to bring restaurants. We, we did give first preference to Chamber restaurants. Two weeks later than, so that's adults only, but two weeks later, the whole family is invited out to Viking Park for an expansion of what used to be the Trick or Treat Trail. And the Park District has now, through our participation, added more events. We've got, you know, sort of some spooky games and activities that will appeal to the older kids. There are hay rides, carnival games, and just really trying to make that to appeal to a wider range of ages. So that's October 14th. And then moving into the holiday season, since we're talking about cooperation with the Chamber, the Chamber will be leading, heading up a new sponsorship banner, banner sponsorship program. So the streetlights along Old Grand and Old Plain will again be festooned with the holiday banners. And thank you very much to Public Works for obviously making that happen from an operational perspective. We will put them up, we'll take them down, we'll store them. The Chamber will do the outreach to the business community. They can see their name in lights. And we can let, you know, add to the festivity of our civic core. So it's really a great win-win. And then Holiday Lights at Walton Plaza returns for the third year, scheduled for Thursday, December 7th, from 5:30 to 7:30. So Mayor, Mayorhood and Santa really are the only ones that have the hard jobs. We just get to have fun and, you know, enjoy the fire pits at each other and the somores and the carolers and all those things. So more, more details to come on that, but looking forward to bigger and better than ever. And I'm not sure who I'm turning it over to. Oh, I guess I'm turning it over to Jody.
Is there no holiday train this year?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm talking about Initiative 6.2, which establishes and supports events in partnership with community and neighborhood organizations. So again, this can goes with lifestyle vitality, but not limited to business, moving over to the resident side of things. One of the initiatives that came out was community cohesion amongst neighborhoods. And so streamlining the block party process has been completed. And we did a, an increased amount of PR for that this past summer. And we did notice an increase in the amount of block party requests in comparison to previous years. And so they go online, it'll take them to the GovQA portal. It's pretty simple. It goes through Public, goes to Public Works pretty quickly, comes to myself and all the departments involved. Police and Fire are still always welcome and told of all this, put on their calendars. And they have been able to make out and kind of be part of the communities when these events are going on. One of the things that we also want to do is, is head up neighborhood champions, find those individuals in the neighborhoods who do like to lead the block parties, who do like to, who have good contact with all of their residents. So we have been able to generate this list by kind of going back and reviewing who the block party requests are, able to come up with the champions for that. And then also reviewing the room reservation requests that come in for the different police, for the rooms available in PD, Fire and Village Hall. This has helped us kind of pinpoint, figure out all the different HOAs that are out there and to start contact with them too. So this, these other resources, resources are really kind of helping out, helping us make outreach with the residents and the HOAs. Moving on to 6.3, develop relationships with regional multicultural agencies. So part of what came out of the strategic plan as well, as was talked about with Christine Palmeri, to increase our diversity, to increase our outreach, to make sure that every resident here feels welcomed in Gurnee. So with that, we have been able to identify different organizations within Lake County that we can partner with, whether it means bringing them and involving them in the different events that we have going on on town, or us kind of going out there predominantly with the mayor to say hello. We have selected an internal group of representatives from, staff from the village who will be part of this and kind of brainstorm sessions together to figure out what else we can do to make it out into the community and make sure everybody feels as though they are part of the Village of Gurnee. Some of that also includes increased communication with Warren Township High School. And I know that their group, their youth leadership group is, is very active and involved. And there's a podcast initiative that's getting ready to get started. So I think all of this will also kind of help some of these, and we hope that they're going to help some of the long-term goals of police, fire and just getting local government and knowledge out to the, the young residents of town and, and hoping that they go out, get their education, come back, bring it here.
Okay. To close it out is 6.4. It's the initiative of creating opportunities for community engagement around the strategic plan. Many of these are already in progress and they're kind of sub-initiatives of this major initiative. So I'm going to touch on each one of them individually. For the state of the village, currently dates are under consideration right now to, for the, be taken at a board meeting. After that, we'd like to do an open house and invite the homeowners associations as well as residents to basically come in and talk to us about anything that may be on their minds. The next one is adding a QR code to the newsletters. The QR codes are really good for redirecting input back to the village. So if somebody had this QR code in the newsletter, they would scan it and it would take them back to like a village survey or something like that. So the next opportunity we see to have this is for the pedestrian mobility within the village as we want to get input on that. The next one is preparing and distributing abbreviated key village documents. Really, you know, I, I'd put down this would be reevaluated, but as I thought about it more, it's actually, we, we have been doing this for, in terms of finance, we came out with the PAFR this year, which really wasn't a strict PAFR set by the GFOA. It was really a, a, a description of the budget as well as key financial priorities of the village, as well as some things that you would see in a normal PAFR. And then for infrastructure, we have the construction schedule each year. It kind of, you know, it's a separate feature in the village newsletter, which is a whole page that kind of breaks down on how, what, what improvements are taking place when they're taking place and just really gives some stuff like that. We also added the green, or the Gurnee Green Guide, which was basically a guide created by me and the Environmental Sustainability Committee to, to direct residents on where they could take things for safe disposal and recycling. And so far, we've seen here at Village Hall, which is the Sharps Containers, that's been, and things have been coming in. So it's been a success in that regard. And then we also added the year in review and will be coming out with senior and veteran guides to assist those individuals. For the last thing is the opportunities for the public to converse with the mayor. So far, we have Coffee with the Board, which is a quarterly basis right now, or Coffee with the Mayor, which is quarterly basis, but it may be, you know, Ice Cream with the Mayor, which is up next. And then the Tom's Tours, which is frequently going throughout local businesses and organizations and taking a look and sharing what they have to offer to the community. And then the Training in the Park, which brings the various departments throughout the, to the neighborhoods and really gives residents a chance to interact. And then the Village and the Chamber are routinely collaborating in these ribbon cuttings and grand opens. So we really have a, you know, a, a good group of individuals really sharing and getting input from the residents, which is the point of this strategic priority. So that's it for 6.4. Thank you.
So that wraps up the first progress report. So as you heard, a lot of good stuff going on. Again, we're early on in the plan. So as we continue to build on it, there'll be more to report. Next one will be in conjunction with the budget. So it'll be baked into that. We'll call on some things, probably won't be as comprehensive or as formal as this. Then we'll be back again before the Vills Board next fall with a third report. That'll be similar to this one. So we'll get this posted on the website. I found some typos in it tonight. I found some typos in it tonight, even though we've all looked at it multiple times. And as you're sitting here looking at it, you find some, so we'll get it cleaned up. We'll get it posted online, also share it on social media. As you go through it, if there's things you see that you think need more of a focus or you have questions on, let us know. Otherwise, we'll continue chugging away at this, so.
Thank you for your hard work on this. I appreciate deadlines. I'm guessing you guys might have appreciated it as well. It's like just reminding me what our strategic plan was to start with. That was really helpful, so. And thank you that you're working on it, so I appreciate that. So on to item two. Nick, are you, presentation, Blue Ribbon Commission Pedestrian Mobility Plan Update. I'm sure there's an acronym in there somewhere.
So Nick touched on this a little earlier when he ran through one of his sheets. So Blue Ribbon Commission was established a number of years ago, came up with a list of pedestrian and biking improvements in the community. They prioritize those. I think we've made excellent progress since the plan was put into place. I think we've made more progress than a lot of people realize. So Nick's here tonight going to talk about some of that progress we've made, what's upcoming, and then if there's any feedback from the village board or the public upcoming, incorporated in the plan. Obviously, as we put the budgets together, more of a heads up we can have from a financial, from an engineering, from a permitting standpoint, the better. So Nick.
Good evening, everyone. Like Pat said, I'm going to be giving a brief update on the Blue Ribbon Commission. The BRC was a committee to develop a list of potential projects that would improve not only pedestrian but bicycle infrastructure to make Gurnee walkable and bikable. The presentation will go into some background on the commission. Progress has been made and future progress to come. Sidewalk infrastructure and walkability was noted as a top priority during the development of the 2016-2021 Strategic Plan. The BRC was a citizen-led committee appointed by the previous mayor, Mayor Kavarek. It was made up of cross-section of the community, such as avid bikers, planners, experts, walkers and engaged citizens. The committee met monthly to devise a plan for how to improve Gurnee, to be more friendly to walkers, runners and bikers. The BRC analyzed the 1996 pedestrian master plan, the 2016 pedestrian survey that was taken, and the existing regional plans. Using GIS mapping, the group looked at existing infrastructure of trails and sidewalks to identify criteria for recommending new or improved infrastructure. The group developed five guiding principles. The five principles were connections to regional trails, connections to Parkinson's schools, improvement, improve connectivity along major roadways, connections to local businesses, and then fill in infrastructure gaps. They also had priority tiers. So the Blue Ribbon Commission identified 30, oh, am I doing this right? Oops, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Pardon me. The Blue Ribbon Commission identified 30 projects that will improve accessibility and connectivity for pedestrians and bicyclists. It was recommended that wider multi-use paths were preferred over standard sidewalks when feasible. The recommendations were divided into priority tiers. Priority one, critical to meeting the goals set forth in the guiding principles, recommend completion with three to five years, subject to funding. Priority two, important to meeting guiding principles, recommended completion within five to seven years, subject to funding. And then priority three, would help meet the goals of the guiding principles, but may not be hired priority due to minimal impact or existing infrastructure, recommend completion within 15 years, subject to funding. That was part of the handout, the green and sheet that was just distributed. Current progress. So I also distributed a map showing the overall village of Gurnee. The map shows red lines indicating future projects. The green lines indicated completed projects, and then the blue lines indicate existing paths or trails. The green lines indicate locations that have been completed either by the village, Lake Dot or I Dot. Moving on to our first project that we completed, it was Knolls Road pedestrian path. This path was a key project because it linked one of the village's major bike paths, the ComEd Trail, and thousands of village residents within Roland, with the Roland Savanna Forest Preserve and the Millennium Trail. The village's path was fully completed this year, stretching from Rollins Road to Route 45. The Lake County Forest Preserve is responsible for projects two and three on the list, improving the intersection at Route 45 in Data to provide a PED crossing and tying the Rollins Savanna Forest Preserve to the Millennial Trail. The village was responsible for projects one and five. Here are a couple drone photos of the finished product of the Knolls PED path. The top left is where the path starts from Rollins Road. Top right is where it meets the ComEd Trail. And the bottom picture is the intersection at Route 45 in Data, where the path meets the Rollins Savanna Forest Preserve path. The village installed a little over a half mile, 0.67 miles, to be precise. This path was done in two phases. Route 45 to the ComEd Trail, and then the ComEd Trail to Roland, Rollins, Rollins Road. Moving on to our next project was the Hunk Club Road. This was project 15. It was a partial completion. Back in 2017, the village installed a six-foot wide carriage walk along the back of Curb from Wildflower. The South Ridge subdivision entrance to Wentworth Drive. It was a little under a half mile of sidewalk that was installed. It was completed as part of one of our water main projects, although we only finished part of the path from Wildflower to Wentworth Drive. Later, I'll go into a future project that plans to complete the walk basically from Wildflower up to Hunk Club and Washington intersection. Route 132 and US 41, everybody's favorite intersection. This was completed in 2021 by I Dot. This project was to improve the crossing to Route 41 and the Union Pacific Railroad. The project installed signalized pedestrian lights for this multi-leg intersection, greatly increasing the safety of this intersection and walkability from the east side to the west side of town. The next project that was completed was Route 21. This was a small gap in our infrastructure, in our sidewalk, I should say, just north of Windsor Court along Route 21. This partially satisfied project 22. Long-term, the BRC, Blue Ribbon Commission would like to see this path turn into an eight-foot wide multi-use path. But what, what was installed, what was installed was a little under 100 feet of sidewalk as part of the 2022 resurfacing project. And again, this was essentially prior to three. We just filled in a gap to provide connectivity basically all, all the way from Washington to Route 132, 132, Route 132 along Route 21. A lot of routes. University Avenue Path, this was project 27. The BRC wanted to connect residents south of Grand Avenue to the Christine Thompson Park. Unfortunately, the surrounding neighborhood did not want the path, and the project was canceled. We were working with the Gurnee Park District to acquire easements so that we could tie the path into the park. It was going to be a multi-use, eight-foot wide path as well. Although the University Avenue Path did not get installed as part of the Lawrence Avenue reconstruction, this year, we will be installing a five-foot wide sidewalk along the west side of Lawrence Avenue, as indicated in the green line. This would be completing a loop for the subdivision slash area. The blue dotted line up on the screen shows existing sidewalk, so giving this area kind of good connectivity, as well as residents along Lawrence will have a safe passage to the park and/or Grand Avenue. Future projects within the one, hopefully one to three-year timeframe. First up is Dilly's Road PED path. The village is working with Gaywell Hamilton and Lake Dot currently. This path will connect the Stern School Road path to the ComEd Right-Away Trail along Dilly's. Our goal will be for it to be completed, completely finished in fiscal year 25, early fiscal year 25. We hope to bid it out in the fall or winter of this year for it to be ready for construction this come, this coming spring. In the future, the village will look to work with Lake County Department of Transportation, Lake Dot, again to finish the southern portion of this path to Route 132. The next big project that's coming soon, hopefully, is projects 11, 12 and 13, and partially 15 on the list. This will be Lake Dot's intersection improvement at Washington and Hunk Club Road. They'll be installing an eight-foot wide multi-use path from Data Drive south to Washington, and then finally connecting the path just east of the intersection along Washington, project 13 on the list. South of Washington, along Hunk Club, they will be installing a six-foot wide carriage walk all the way down to Wildflower Court, similar to the one we installed in 2013, or 2017. We're hopeful this project begins this next construction season, fiscal, fiscal year 25. The county has been delayed due to right-of-way acquisitions and utility conflicts. So that's still up in the air if that's going to be going here in the next couple of months or not. Project 20, Lake Carina Forest Preserve. The Lake County Forest Preserve is looking to tie the Lake Carina Trail to the Displanes River Trail by building a pedestrian bridge over the Displanes River. This project has been approved by the Lake County Forest Preserve and is in their capital improvement plan for fiscal year 28. And then other pedestrian improvements of note, the county recently reached out to us regarding a potential path along Washington from Route 45 to Almond Road and a sidewalk along the same area. They would like to install a multi-use path along the north side of Washington from Route 45 to Almond, and then also a pedestrian, a sidewalk from Old Walnut to Almond on the south side. This is not on the Blue Ribbon Commission's list, but will help achieve the village's objective of being walkable and bikable. Once this path is approved and installed, the village will have a multi-use path from Route 45 all the way down to Oak Plain Road along Washington, giving the village four and a half miles of path connecting to various other paths within town. I believe Lake Dot is still in phase one for this project. In summary, we've completed five projects since 2016 on the Blue Ribbon Committee's, Commission's list. This past month, I reached out to the committee to see if any updates would be in order. Everyone seems to be satisfied with the results thus far. The village will continue to chip away at this list by working with other agencies such as Gurnee Park District, Lake County Forest Preserve, Lake County Department of Transportation, I Dot and ComEd. With that, are there any questions or recommendations to be made to the list from the board?
Am I right? Anybody? No? Am I allowed? So I'd like to, I think just as Austin said, Austin had said with the QR code and reaching out, just to have every level of reaching out to the residents, they're going to be best to tell you where they like to walk their dogs or where they don't, and items like that to draw on their experience. And I think Public Works for making a number of those sidewalks passable, where they've heaved in some places where they get ground down, and I think also to depend on residents to tell us on places that need some help that already exist. So I think we'll, we've done a good job of getting out to the public, and with this specific item, I think this will be a good place for us to draw, to gain some more information for us. And I do agree, I think we've made great progress thus far. There's a lot more to do, and that's okay. That's job security, right, Nick?
That's right.
And they didn't ask, did anybody have any questions about the strategic plan for any of the people that presented or? Good, I didn't ask. So is there a motion to adjourn? Second by trustee Ross, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.